I call a meeting to the order of the Winona County Planning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God.
Approval of the agenda?
I make the motion.
Louis made the motion and Eugene second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Agenda is approved. Approval of minutes for July 20th, 23.
Go move.
Louis made the motion.
Second.
And John seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Updates, County Board of Adjustment.
We had one thing today was a statistic system for Beth Kiefer in Elba to be one foot from the property line instead of 10 feet. And we approve of that.
Okay, thank you. County Board update, Marcia's not here, so I will do that. The County Board tabled the Nantheim CUP request till the August 22nd at 7:00 PM County Board meeting. Per petitioners' request, they stated they could not attend the August 8th meeting and wished to have a full five-member County Board when they were heard. So, that's all that's happening at the County Board. Okay, petitions, docket PC 08172301. To consider the petition of co-applicants Hemp Hill LLC and Jared and Joan Zinke, property owners, to a conditional use or interim use permit for a wireless communications 259-foot guide tower. Olivia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so a little bit of the site overview. It is a New Hartford township. The access is through the St. John's Lutheran Church and School property off of County Road 12. You can see it there, taking 12 south from 90. Looking at the site plan that the applicant created, on the right there, you'd be coming through the church property south into an existing egg field to approximately 75 by 75 leased area. And then the areas where the wires would be coming down would be through an easement. So this is looking with an aerial image off of a beacon, you can see we follow the red dash line that's through the existing parking lot, past the school and church building down into the area that the proposed facility would be located in. Some of the site considerations, it would be a leased area of the Zinke property, like I said, with an easement through that church parcel. It'd be off of County Road 12. The congregation did approve an access easement through the church property by vote at a meeting in this past April. The facility itself would include an approximate 259-foot tower. And the base location distances are there on the bottom, it'd be approximately 347 feet from the structure, the base of the structure to the school building. So some photos, this is looking from County Road 12 through the existing driveway, looking south. This is looking, if you're past the driveway, in the photo, you can see the staked area going through the grass there and then cutting to the left through the cornfield to get to that proposed easement. And then this is just a closer-up photo of where that driveway would be going towards the tower site. We didn't get any pictures in the corn to show you where it would be, but it's back kind of in the middle and you can see in the aerial where it would be in relation to the parcel boundary, which is highlighted in blue there. And this would be looking on the property line itself, looking north towards the St. John's parcel. So New Hartford did submit a township acknowledgement form. They did sign the form indicating support. They did have a written comment on the form and they submitted an additional letter as well that was included in your packets for consideration. So our recommendation would be that you consider all materials and testimony before making findings that support your decision. Analysis and draft findings, do you support granting the petition as a conditional use permit? And if you should decide to approve the petition, staff have drafted 11 conditions for your consideration. If you do have any questions on the petition, I'm available and both of the co-petitioners are here as well tonight.
Anyone have any questions for Olivia?
How many, how close is the nearest residential? For that tower, are we over 1,000 feet?
I don't know about the nearest residence, but the nearest structure is going to be 347 feet. But I couldn't tell you residence. Right.
What was that?
She was saying that the gym is 347 feet, which is the closest structure.
Our home is just to the east of the church. And judging by the map, it would look like that's about 1,000 feet.
Anyone else have any other questions for Olivia?
So the end of the red line is where the church is located? That dwelling is the church?
So the church is not a dwelling?
Structure.
Right.
The gym's the white and the gray is the school?
There is a dwelling located here, here, and here. So there is three, four in close proximity. They'd probably be, this is roughly 347, they'd probably be somewhere in the 500-foot neighborhood, give or take from residential. It is the village of Nodine.
Yeah.
For clarification on the recommendation, I'm just wondering what this means, site would be maintained for use as an emergency management response facility? What does that mean?
That's a typical condition that's included when we have wireless communication facilities. The petitioner could probably speak more to that. But it's my understanding that a lot of wireless carriers, in the event of an emergency, use that potentially.
Any other questions for Olivia? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the petitioner would like to come up and speak, please? Name and address, please, and then what you'd like to say.
My name is Rick Adams. I'm an agent for Hemp Hill and Verizon. My address is 1635 East Anto Lake Road Northwest in Bacchus, Minnesota. So I know, I attended the township board hearing and listened to what the citizens have had to say. Of course, you have letters and the general concern was RF emission safety. There's a lot of debate about that. And I sent in your package to be a response that I sent to some of the information that was given out. And basically, I didn't know how much, how many of the board members were familiar with the Telecom Act and what it entails. Obviously, it does leave local zoning jurisdiction to the local zoning authorities. However, and through zoning ordinances, there are typically tower performance standards. But in reviewing Winona County ordinance, I didn't see, we didn't see any zoning standards whatsoever that were that were in place. So when the group of engineers we met out at the site, you know, I suggested, let's keep this tower at least half the distance of the height of the tower away from the property lines because it's very common for us to, to come up with engineered fall zone letters of half the height of the tower. But in this case, they went further and they produced one that said the fall zone of this particular tower is 50 feet. So in the rare, rare case that it, there was a failure, it would be contained within 50 feet of the base of the tower, so well within the property lines. As far as RF emission standards, you know, the FCC retained complete authority over what's what's safe and what's not safe. And they took that decision out of your hands, probably to your delight because it is quite messy and complicated figuring out what is safe and what isn't safe. A lot of people have been making the allegations that, oh, 5G, which stands for fifth-generation radios, are new and therefore we don't know what safety levels are. Or the FCC doesn't know what safety levels are, there's nothing in force. And that's false. 5G is just another type of radio, it's all radios. This tower would have, with Verizon's installation, they have both 4G, fourth-generation and fifth-generation radios. The radios work on different platforms and it's just like the difference between AM radio and FM radio. They produce the same thing, only differently. It's still a radio wave coming out of both AM transmitter and FM transmitter. So the difference between a 4G transmitter and a 5G transmitter is they come up with a new platform to translate radio waves into light waves faster. And they did that for several reasons. One is the lapse time between a command and a response was greatly, was greatly decreased, which allows for almost instantaneous commands to a car or to a pumping facility or to a water tower. And thus, it does two things. One is it enables more applications that weren't possible before. And two is allows more capacity for a certain radio to handle data. Nowadays, most of the data being handled by these towers aren't cellphone data or cellphone traffic, voice traffic. It's a lot more video and a lot more computers and cars and a lot of other data being used instead of voice. So right now, the reason why they have two types of generations of equipment on there is the fourth-generation equipment is less expensive and it's fast enough to handle normal voice transmissions and things like that. It doesn't take up that much space or data. But with the new fifth-generation radios, they work about 50 times faster. You got 50 times more capacity to transfer data quickly. And most of that data is in the form of video, is one of the biggest users. Because now we have smart TVs, video and smart TVs that work off these systems. Your laptop, computers work off of these systems, plus a lot of emergency management equipment. So, but when you get down to the radio wave technology, it's an old technology. The FCC was formed in the 30s to control radio waves and come up with standards for the public. And of course, we've had radio waves being transmitted publicly for over 100 years. So it's just a radio wave. Now, the radios work at different frequencies. And initially, when we had our first cell sites, the carriers were given a 30 megahertz spectrum at eight, around 850 megahertz top rate, while they soon filled that up. And then they were, more licenses were sold in 1996. Because those licenses were sold is why you ended up with the Telecom Act. Because the carrier said, we're not going to pay a lot of money for licenses if we can't use them and the local zoning authorities are prohibiting us from, from building out our systems. So that's why you ended up with the Telecom Act. So that, but those licenses, they're again, some are 30 megahertz bandwidth, some were 10. And those are all around 1,900 megahertz. And then later on, the government sold 700 megahertz, which is where most of the 4G equipment is. And as far as for coverage, 700 megahertz is the strongest signal that most of the carriers use. And that's the one that gives you the most coverage out in an area. But just recently, in 2021, the federal government took 150 megahertz bandwidth away from satellite TV people that were, was being underutilized, sold it to the carriers or the carriers bought it. And it's that huge bandwidth. I mean, they're not, they're not restricted to 30 megahertz anymore. They got 150 megahertz of bandwidth, around 3,500 megahertz is the average frequency. And that bandwidth is where most of the data is going to be carried in the future as we get more and more devices in, in homes and in businesses, fire stations, schools, et cetera. Well, that 3,500 megahertz bandwidth is very, very weak. So what happens is when they have them building new cell sites today, they put them real close to residences, schools and community centers. So now, instead of concentrating on trying to get coverage up and down I-90 and putting cell sites out on I-90 that has good coverage, they're concentrating on, yes, expanding some coverage, but their main goal is to get in-home and in-building coverage with the 3,500 megahertz band in communities. So now these towers are being built real close to communities. So some counties in the past had, and I had 1,000-foot setback requirements from residences off the properties. And there are a few counties up north that had those. They've all changed those setback requirements since then because what they found out was the rural areas were getting covered in those counties that had those, those, that type of setback. But nothing was getting covered in the developed areas and that's where most of the service is being used. So 1,000-foot setbacks was found years ago not to be practical. What the, but given that there is so much concern about the effects of 5G and what's safe and isn't safe, even though this board doesn't have the authority to make a decision on what's safe, what isn't safe. I did produce some information to the board because I don't want people going around thinking these towers are unsafe and what the criteria is. So the FCC set up criteria years ago and and that initial criteria that they had to come up with in the Telecom Act directed to come up with is basically if an antenna, if a carrier is working within his license limits and those antennas are more than 10 meters off the ground or away from public exposure. Let's say if you had one on the ground or on a rooftop and the carrier put a fence around it so people couldn't get within 10 meters of the front of that antenna, they're deemed categorically safe by the FCC. Now, that doesn't mean an antenna less than 10 meters off the ground is safe. It just means to prove that safety, you have to, you might have to go through some measurements, some EMF measurements. But these antennas are proposed to be 240 feet off the ground, which is, and obviously a meter is about three and a half feet. So there's, they're in excess, way in excess of 10 meters off the ground, way in excess of 10 meters away from that, the school structure, the gym structure. So the FCC has deemed this facility to be categorically safe for 4G, 5G, whatever. So the other thing is the industry has put out bar shafts, bar charts, to help people cope with these fears of RF radio frequency exposure, radio wave exposure. And I sent the bar graph, you should have it in your folder there. But the bar graph is really interesting in that it shows different wireless devices that that are kind of common, like baby monitors, cordless cell phones. They also have macro cell sites and that's what we're talking about here, outdoor exposure versus in-building exposure. And that particular bar chart, bar chart, if I can come up with it here. Looks like this. Is that, that is, the chairman has a bar chart. So I got extra copies, he's on wants one, because this is pretty important.
We all should have one. Here you go.
I might have to put my glasses on to read it myself, I know a lot of it by heart. So in interpreting this bar chart, the it has to do with exposure limits the FCC set based upon different frequencies. So the baby, a baby monitor is safe. Exposure from baby monitors are safe, but it's less than 1,000 microwatts per square centimeter. And the baby monitor operates normally at .25 and, and normally at, and at high usage at 2. So it's really safe. I mean, it's 500 times safer than the, than the limit that the FCC set. The, if you look at the macro sites, it's got the same exposure because they operate at a similar frequency. So that safety limit is also 1,000 microwatts for, per centimeter square. And they normally, outdoor exposure, if you're standing outside looking at this tower, is, is the normal exposure is one micro watt per centimeter cube. Now, if it was running at full capacity, totally maxed out, it would get up to 23 microwatts. So that's way safer than the 1,000 level that the FCC said is being safe. And if you look at a micro site indoors, they're at .00, .05 is the normal and .5 microwatts is if the site is running at full, full capacity. So that's why these sites are really, really safe. Because they operate so much lower than the level, than the limits that the FCC set. So coincidentally, you have other exposures in here. You have cordless phones that operate, that exposure level is 40,000 microwatts per centimeter. And they get up there at, produce about 30. So they produce more exposure than a cell site. So when people say, well, we're concerned about school kids having macro sites outside of a school building, you know, that really should be more concerned about having cordless phones, smart TVs, computers inside the building and cell phones inside the building, that they should be having a macro site outside the building. So hopefully, some of this information will dampen down some of the fears in the community about having this macro site by this school. And in fact, I've personally, I brought pictures, but I personally have cited a number of cell sites on school property and on school roofs. And yeah, sometimes the parents are concerned and they need some explanation to dampen their fears because they see a cell tower going up, you know, at their kid's school, right outside the school building. Like this, there is some concern. So I hope that some of this information, even though you don't have the authority to determine what's safe and what isn't safe and what's the safe distance for RF exposure from this school, that this helps you folks realize what's, what's going on here. So I did talk to Marcia this morning on the phone and asked, answered her questions. And her main question is, why, why isn't this site, you know, further away from town? And I gave her the explanation about the 3,500 megawatt or megahertz frequencies and how we, the carriers need to get those into buildings. And she says, why Nodine? Why there are other places in the county that need the service better than Nodine? And I said, well, the carriers, the general explanation for that is the carriers, all the carriers, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, they have several RF engineers on staff. And they typically assign an RF engineer for each service area. And there's one assigned for this service area, which is called Minnesota 11, rural service area. And that engineer looks at every operating cell site quarterly and analyzes how many, because they have data, how many calls were transmitted on that cell site in each sector? Because typically, there's three sectors on a cell site. They look at each sector on that cell site and see how many calls were successful, how many calls were dropped? Because maybe they, the car, the self, the device is mobile and it went from one cell site to another. And sometimes there's not an open channel and the calls dropped. I'm sure you all experienced that. And then how many calls are attempted but aren't put through because there's no capacity? And they analyze the capacity and what's happening on every cell site in the rural service area. And they know their weaknesses in your county. And they identify the weaknesses and they prioritize them. And the RF engineer has his priority list and he fights with the other RF engineers with upper management for the limited amount of money they have to build new cell sites. And somehow, this site, Nodine, was prioritized to the level where they funded it. And the funding's not, well, it's a significant amount of money. So they're going to invest a significant amount of money in the Nodine community. And I don't know the exact reasons why, but I know their, their funding is, is limited. And, and they, someone that controls the money was convinced that this is an important site for Verizon. Now, to, to make this site less expensive for Verizon, they partnered with Hemp Hill Towers to, for Hemp Hill, to build the tower and to own the tower. So Verizon's going to be a tenant and they're the anchor tenant. Now Hemp Hill's in the business of not selling airtime like Verizon, they're in the business of leasing up tower space. So they're going to actively lease other antenna levels on this tower to the other carriers or anyone else that needs wireless tower space. It'll be, it's a multi-tenant tower, it's designed that way. There's no money in building and owning a single tenant tower. So it's kind of a good case for me, an independent tower owner, because you know they're going to market the power actively to other, to other carriers. And the last point I make at this point is, you know, Marcia's saying, why don't you go out on the state tower, you know, out by the interstate? And the RF engineers and the people at Verizon looked at that tower and I can assure you, if it were, would work for them and for their goals, they'd be and I can assure you if it would work, would work for them and for their goals, they'd be on it. I personally have negotiated a number of leases of putting Verizon on a number of state towers. And sometimes they're where the carrier needs and sometimes they're not where they need it. But when they can use them, they use them. So, but in this case, they decided they, it wasn't in a good spot for their use for their goals, for in building penetration for their wireless services. Plus they're trying to cover a little bit more to the south of Nodine. So, so I know I gave you a lot of information. I have a lot more, which you probably don't want at this point, but hopefully that helps.
Any questions for you? Anyone have any questions? Eugene?
There is a tower out by Quick Trip, right?
Right, the state tower that I talked about.
That's the state tower?
Mm-hmm. And AT&amp;T is on that tower.
And that's the only one on that tower?
Well, the state and AT&amp;T.
I thought you just got done telling us several times that most of these towers are leased up more than one carrier.
Right. I'm not saying that that tower is at capacity. I'm saying that tower is in the wrong location for Verizon to meet their objectives of invest, you know, of bringing a new wireless facility into this part of your county. It's a mile and a half away from where they want to be. And I don't know who Marcia was riding with, but I heard the comment on the phone when I talked to her this morning. Well, the signal's got to go a mile, it's got to go at least a mile and a half. And some of the signals do, the 700 megahertz does travel. You know, they'll travel depending on terrain, eight, 10 miles. But the 3,500 megahertz spectrum won't, that, that is limited to about a mile. So it, it kind of depends on what frequency you're talking about. And they operate at five different frequencies right now, they're licensed for.
In other words, you're telling me and the rest of this commission that to have maximum coverage, we've got to have a tower every mile?
To have maximum in-building coverage, you've got to have a tower within a mile of, of, and even closer. In fact, I worked in some communities, mine not being one, they have, they decided somewhere along the line that towers had to be at least a mile apart. And we're going from the other tower. And they said, well, you can't, you've got to be on that tower over there. You can't be on this tower because that's within. They had in their ordinance, you're supposed to co-locate if a tower was within a mile of where you want it to be. And they said, you've got to co-locate on that tower. And I said, well, the problem is we're on that tower and now we need this tower. So in a, in a community like Minneapolis, you need a cell site every five blocks. So now, in your county, you know, when, when you get in Winona here, you're going to have more than, your cell sites are going to be closer than a mile apart. Now, out in Nodine, Nodine might be a little bit different. You know, each, you've got to look at the train and the population center, so.
Any other questions for Lynn?
On, on this chart, the, the last category, there's macro sites and small cells outdoors.
Right.
I was wondering what, what qualifies as a small cell?
Well, in, and that's what started a lot of this controversy about 5G is initially the FCC came out and said, because of the discrimination part of the telecom act, they said, told all, any jurisdiction that has control over it right away, that you've got to allow small cell sites, right? Now, they're, they're typically limited to two antennas and, and less wattage than, than a macro site. And those, they started putting those on poles in front of people's houses at 25 feet, 30 feet, and it was 5G technology. But they're, they're operating at six gigahertz or 6,000 megahertz. So that signal only carried a block or two. So when they were trying to cover, bring 5G into really dense community, sometimes they, they will put four of these around a high school, or four of them around a county courthouse, or one on every city block. And people were getting upset about that. But the FCC told the communities that in, in a lot of cases, unless you were in a residential neighborhood or historic neighborhood, you had to permit those towers in your right of way, up to 50 feet tall with an administrative permit. So a lot of these were being done administratively, there's no public hearings, people were upset. And that's where 5G really started getting a bad name. But that's what they're talking about. Those, that's a small cell site. And, but what happened in 2021 is the government opened up, federal government opened up this 3,500 megahertz band. And it's such a wide bandwidth that the carriers kind of moved away temporarily from small cell sites to macro, macro sites with 3,500 megahertz. So instead of having a 30-foot cell site every block in a city, now you can buy with a cell site every mile, basically, with that type of technology.
Louis?
My question has to do with the power coming out of the tower. If you're 500 feet away from it, if my calculations are right, it would be one two hundred fifty thousandths of the power. That'd be right, one over R squared?
Something like that, yeah.
So I mean, power, what I'm getting at is the power reaching into the houses at 500 feet would be practically negligible?
Right, right. And the reason for that, the main reason for that is, yes, and the main reason for the discrepancy between the thousand and the 23 is, is the carrier's license for more power than you're using. Because when the original license was given out, we were walking around with three watt bag phones back in the 90s. And those three watt bag phones transmitted a lot further than these things. But at some point, they decided, well, it's not the best thing to have a bunch of three watt bag phones running around on people's bodies. And so, and they were cumbersome. So when they wanted these phones that people carry in their shoe, their pockets or whatever, I mean, these are operating about three tenths of a watt because it made them safer. Well, if these are operating at three tenths of a watt, there's no sense having a real powerful radio on the tower because it's two-way communications. So there's no sense putting a 500-watt transmitter on a tower and booming out 20 miles when this thing, range on this thing is only six. So they, even though they're licensed for more wattage on there, to make, to make the channels more balanced, the forward channel and the backward channel, because this is just a radio too, it's a fancy radio. So the channels, the forward and backward channels are balanced, they voluntarily decrease the power on those radios on the macro sites because they don't want to overpower the system. And you could probably tell, sometimes when you're on a call, it's hard to tell. You're, you're hearing someone's voice on this thing, but they're not hearing you. And that's because you're out of the range, this can't respond back to the tower. So they don't want that happening a lot. So they want to keep the, the channels somewhat balanced between this, this radio and the radio on the tower. So if it's safe to carry this radio, you have this radio in the room, it's extra, extra safe to have a radio on top of a, 250 feet on top of a tower.
What's the wattage on the tower now versus the 500 transmitter?
Typically 100 to 200 watts, something like that. So.
Jordan? Is the power and fiber to this site coming in the same way as the driveway?
Yeah, that's driveway and utility use. So the utility should be coming on the west side of the driveway. And the back hall off this site, if you're interested in back hall, is going to be fiber. And that's why the 5G radios have to have fiber for back hall. And that's how they get the quicker signals.
Is there fiber right now in Nodine?
Yeah, I think I saw it. But if there's not, they'll bring it in.
I have a question about the radius of a, a tower failure. So you mentioned that the tower is designed to basically collapse within a 50-foot radius. Is that right?
Right, that's what the engineering letter that was produced says.
Can you elaborate on that, what the mechanism is for doing that? Specifically, what I'm wondering is, I can imagine two different failure modes of a tower. One where the guy wires are all intact and structurally the tower, for some reason, earthquake or whatever, starts to fail. And then I can, you know, imagine it falling in a very narrow radius for that reason. But what about if a guy wire fails? And so it's going to fall in some direction? Is that 50-foot radius still believable in that case?
That's what the engineer is certified to. But yes, it is because the guy wires, when they fail, typically when they, if, if they would fail, they get iced up and they get heavy and they don't snap. They just, they just put more weight on the, the, this type of tower. The steel structure is very slender. And, and it wants to crumple, wants to bend. It's not like a self-support tower where you've got a really strong steel base. The strength from these towers come from the guidelines. And, and there's, if you look at how they design the guidelines, the guidelines will, and how they control that fall zone is, if, if they have one of the 50% fall zone, they put a guideline maybe spaced 70 feet apart. If they want a shorter fall zone, the guidelines are shorter. It might only be 40-foot spans between guidelines.
I see, so the guidelines would attach at different levels?
Yeah, they, they, you know, there's an optimum level for, for for material strength and, and but when you have to control a fall zone, they, they don't go with the optimal. They pull them closer together to control that.
Okay. I should have asked this question when staff was out before, but you've probably talked about it with them. One of their recommendations is on our list, number seven, tower must be dismantled and removed after one continuous year of vacancy at tower owner's expense. And I'm wondering what the meaning of one continuous year of vacancy, what's the vacancy? When, when the telecom company is not paying its bill anymore? Or when they actually remove their equipment from the tower?
Well, the telecom companies, if they got equipment on the tower, there's, you know, they signed a lease to pay rent. So unless AT&amp;T and Verizon went bankrupt, they, they would be paying rent if there's any equipment on that tower. So and then in the lease, in the ground lease, the tower company is obligated to tear down the tower versus Jerry, that's in their lease. So, and I think when I talked to Olivia, she was asking about that. You know, how do these towers get dismantled? And, you know, if it's in a field where there's nothing to harm, you just hook on a guy wire and pull it down, let it collapse and then clean up the steel and sell it for scrap. So it costs virtually nothing. Now, if you're in a more sensitive area, you hire a crane and take it down piece by piece, the way it was put up. So I think because of that, you know, if it comes down, the staff wanted to prove a demolition method because there are various methods to take them down.
So I guess I'm still not clear on what triggers the, the moment that the tower is vacant?
Well, you have to ask staff.
Oh.
I can tell you what I think it is.
Yeah, I'm interested in your company's point of view.
But well, you know, and I've owned several towers in the past. And for me was, you know, if I don't have any tenants left, they're all gone, they're not paying. Now, one thing nice, there's not many things nice, but about, about the situation. But one thing is when the tower is lighted, like this one would be, that tower owner, not only is he paying ground rent to Jerry, a light bill and a mortgage and has to maintain those lights. So if that tower is not producing any income, they're going to be taking it down. They can't afford to have a tower up there just eating cash. So they would probably take it down on us in here as a matter of economics.
Any other questions for the issue? Lynn?
I'm just curious what the typical life, physical?
The modern towers are being built now, I, I think have a life of 75, 80 years, something like that. No, unfortunately, this gets into another area. Unfortunately, the towers that were built in the 1990s, when a lot of this stuff was going on, we weren't anticipating the heavy tower loads that the carriers are putting on towers nowadays. Back then, we were just putting up three whip antennas. And maybe you might have the tower loading of weight of a motorcycle, small motorcycle. Now, you got the weight because now your antenna is bigger and heavier because you're operating at typically five different frequencies. All the radios are on top of the tower too. They're not in the buildings anymore, they're on top of the tower. So now you're, you're putting on a weight car up on, on each antenna level. So the towers, two towers may look similar in size and everything. But I tell you, the tower being built today, especially for four tenants with the modern carrier load, it's built a lot heavier and will be a lot sturdier than the older towers that were built. Because there's a lot of towers built in the 90s that was just before tenant towers because of the weight of the equipment now, are only single-tenant towers realistically. So.
Anyone else with any questions or issue? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for one of you, I'm not sure which one. I know when we did the, the pin through vines, you had to have one and a half times the height from the distance away from any road or line. And it's not the same for a communications tower? I thought all towers were treated the same in Winona County.
They were intrinsically and that renewable energy section of the ordinance, that's chapter 12, we ended up amending that. And yes, at that point, we just captured wind energy turbines. And we, that's where we tabled 12.4, the WEX setback. That's where we have setback of, of fraction that corresponds with the total overall height. And typically 1.1 from property lines, 1.5 from neighboring dwellings, 1.1 from road right of ways. And yeah, so I, we never captured cell tower back in 2010 to 2015. It was the wind energy that was convening the planning commission, the county board to update. So at that point, I did, I have to admit that the cell tower part was neglected. So that's why, you know, we don't have probably, you know, just basically a recommendation is what we put in staff. We have to look at it. And obviously, I think as part of the findings of a conditional use permit for a cell tower, that is one of the considerations as far as what those features are.
I think that one big difference is that wind towers don't have guidelines because the, as the blades spun around from the wind direction, it would be cutting those guidelines. Because the, as the blades spun around from the wind direction, it would be cutting those guidelines. So they're probably way stiffer structures.
That brings another set of dynamics though with those turbine blades.
That tower falls over, it's going to fall its full length. Plus a big field of debris besides. So probably not as necessary for a cell tower that's guy lined versus.
In cell towers, there, we've seen different types of construction throughout the years too. We've seen the guide support, we've seen the lattice. And in some cases, you could see a monopole cell featured tower too. I think Lynn asked a question of the discontinuance. Again, that's a typical condition that's carried over going all the way back to the 70s when we were dealing with radio communication towers. And a lot of those were like 400, 500 feet, they were monsters back in the day. And then as the cell towers started in the 90s and then wind, those are all features, that condition was, was a remnant of, you know, if it's proven that it's not being used, it's been discontinued, it kind of mimics our discontinuation section of the ordinance. It says after a year, it can come down at the owner's expense. So it's just a typical condition that we've used throughout, throughout all the years, so.
Thank you. All right, public hearing.
Second test.
Louis made a motion to open the public hearing and Jordan second it. All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. All right. Anyone who wishes to speak for or against a petition, please step forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say. And please keep it brief, two, three minutes at the most, please, if you can do that. Thank you.
Brooke Erickson, 42709 County Road 12, Dakota, Minnesota, 55925. We live in the home just to the east of this, of the church there. I would like to state three concerns that my wife and I have for this tower. One is for our health. The second would be the value of our home. We purchased it as a foreclosure a couple of years ago with the purpose of living there, fixing it and selling it. So concerns of resale value. As well as we just learned that it's going to be a lighted tower. And I'd like to point out that Nodine is a very rural community. You can see the fronts of our properties may be a little bit urban, but the back is in the country. And a tower with light on it is disturbing to some of us. I'd like to briefly elaborate. The petitioner mentioned a few times that we don't have the authority to determine whether this is safe or not. I fundamentally disagree with that. I would hope that we've all learned in the past years that while it might be helpful to get information, it's not practical or wise to entrust our safety to any organization. Our homes are a place that we create an environment that we each deem as safe to us personally. And the petitioner did state that one of the things this tower does is it will send these radio waves to our homes. So I'd like you to consider that. Our homes are a place that we would like to keep safe as we deem it. And while it may be determined by some organizations that these radio waves are safe, it is indisputable fact that many persons are negatively affected by radio waves and electricity. Thanks.
Andrea Erdman, and I live at 42743 County Road 12 in Dakota. I'm housed at the. And my mom, I have three sons that attend St. John's School. I would submit to the committee that the proposed cell phone tower is too close to the school. The area behind the school is used for recess and gym class. I would submit that having a cell phone tower only 127 feet from the fence line and 347 feet from the gym and playground would not be safe for children. The CDC recommends that cell phone towers be located 1,000 feet from schools and residential dwellings. Other sources recommend 400 meters or 1,312 feet. According to the American Cancer Society, radio frequency waves have not been proven to be safe. More research is needed to prove the safety. Studies completed in Germany and Israel showed increased cases of cancer for those living near a cell phone tower. The German study showed that after six to 10 years of living near a cell phone tower, cancer risks jumped more than threefold. The average age of cancer diagnosis, diagnosis was also much younger. I printed the article for review. But they urged the committee to consider the closeness of this tower to St. John's School, church and homes in our community. Once the tower is installed, installed, the children of St. John's will be exposed to RF waves every moment they're in school. One source advised suggests that the RF waves are most intense between 150 feet and 500 feet from the tower. And I printed the diagram. I just want to suggest that moving the tower back to 1,000 feet from the school property would be a safer option for children. And I just want to point out that this is a small school. And since people have heard about this, a lot of people have said that they are considering whether they'll send their children there. Also want to make a comment, or it said that the church congregation approved this tower. I, only men in our church are allowed to be voting members and that's only the ones that show up for that meeting. So I, I guess I take a little bit of issue that it was the whole congregation because it really wasn't. A lot of people did not know about this until it was posted on Facebook and the letters were sent. Also, I am the clerk for the township, even though I am attending as a mother. But that question was asked at our board meeting, whether other sites were considered for this tower. And that question was not answered, as well as other questions presented to our board. Thank you.
Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mallory Nordstrom, I live at 42641 County Road 12. It's just a little out past the map, you can't see it, but it must have been important enough to get a mailing. I actually shared the information on Facebook when I found out that the majority of our community was not made aware of this project. I think it was startling for all of us to learn that our township had sent their approval of this project. And then that the church also, their board had made support of this project. For me, I don't have a child at the school, however, I do have a child. But my concerns, aside from that, which I know many others will talk about, is my home value. I was doing a little research online and did learn that there is information and support of home values going down within a certain distance of the home, of the tower. In addition to that, I love Nodine. Part of why I moved to Nodine and bought my home almost four years ago was because it is rural. When you drive in, you get to see the views and how beautiful it is. And so since I've learned about this project, I drove in from all three directions into Nodine. And in all three directions, the first thing you see would be this giant tower. And for me, I just don't understand why it has to be so close to our, to all houses. One of the points that he made when he was talking was that the reason they don't place them in rural areas is because it doesn't reach developed areas, they're not getting covered. I would argue Nodine is not really a developed area, it's still very rural. There's not many houses there, so I'm not sure why the purpose is to put it right in Nodine to try to reach developed areas. Another comment that he made when he was talking was that the reason why they're not placing the tower somewhere else is because the people at Verizon say it works, it does not work for them and their goals. I'm just curious what their goals are and if they align with our community goals. So those are just things, some things I'd have to consider and obviously I'm in opposition of this completely.
Thank you.
I'm Darian Frickson and we live along County Road 104. Our children also attend the school there. I'm obviously concerned about the location and proximity to St. John's Nodine. Our children ages eight, seven and three, we live, work and engage within the Nodine community. We are business owners ourselves within the community and we rely on our community for our form of income as well. And we can appreciate growth, innovation and technology as we depend on it for our everyday life as well. I'm in no way completely against the tower. I am, however, against the location of it. All three of my children, along with approximately 70 other children and staff, attend, spend up to eight hours a day there. It's been proven that extended long-term use can be harmful to them. There are many still unknowns with this as health concerns and risks of the long-term exposure. And I guess I just want to take a minute to invite everyone to a little source iPhone called the BioInitiative.org. It's, it's been a group of people since 2012, have prepared by 29 authors from 10 countries, holding medical degrees, MDs, 21 PhDs and three MSC, MPHs. Among the authors are three former presidents of the Bioelectromagnetic Society and five full members of the BEMs. In the 10 years since the BioInitiative report was posted, hundreds of new peer-reviewed research papers have been published. A clear majority of studies report biological effects as opposed to no effect. The trend continues to show that exposure to low intensity or EMF, static fields and RFR at levels allowable under current federal public safety limits pose health risks. They have posted studies that there are new results as of 2022. They did a study on genetic, genetic effects. There was a 60% out of 423 studies, there was a 68% yes, there were effects. And there was a 32% no reported effects. The static field genetic effects, there was an 84% yes, there were effects, there were 16% no effects. So there is a clear documentation year after year that there are being more reported effects from EMFs than not. In my findings, the distance needed to reduce exposures down to the general public precautionary level are often 1,320 feet or a quarter of a mile, if you want to say. So with that being said, I would call on you guys as the county board members to do the research and find, I'm, I'm asking if we can get some data, more data on the radiation EMFs these towers emit and how we can definitively say there are no risks to one's health. If and when harm does occur, how would that be handled? Not sure if this is truth or not, but I've been told there is no liability or insurance companies that are willing to insure these things because of the unknowns and they don't want the repercussions later on. And then I attached, you know, I just said the source that I follow my information from. And I'm calling on the county to represent us as community leaders and having the best interest in the community about the potential harm of this project. I would ask that sufficient data and cited sources and proof that this tower is in fact safe for long-term exposure before making the decision on approving the construction, whether that be a follow-up meeting or whatever you deem acceptable. Thank you.
I'm Marcy Erman, I live at 29496 Nap Hill Road, Dakota, Minnesota, 5595. And I also have children that go to the school. And my concerns are the location. I'm not like against the tower, it's just the location of it because of the radiation exposure that the kids will have. I found out that people within a 50 to 150 meter radius experience symptoms like difficulty to concentrate, appetite loss, extreme discomfort, increased irritability, sleep disorders, headaches, dizziness and nausea. So to put that 50 to 100 feet, meter radius into feet, 50 meters, 164 feet, 150 meters is 492 feet. And from the school is 347. There's been studies where the short term and long term, there's health risks, especially in kids. I found out that the safe distance for a mobile phone tower is also, like previous people said, was a 13, 1,320 feet. And it also, I found out that radiation energy from a mobile tower decreased with distance. It's usually the strongest within 50-meter distance. And then as you move farther away, it gets weaker. As Darian also stated, over time, the radiation exposure increases. So the children are in school for nine months, so they would have a repeated exposure to this. I also got copies of stuff about how the children are more affected by the radiation because they have a thinner skull and it allows the RV radiation to move easier into their brain. And they are also, their brain is also developing rapidly and they are more sensitive. So I feel that we need to consider the location as how close it is to the school and the health, health risks that may be happening to these students. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might be taking up the co-boost here. I'm Caroline Van Sheik, I live at 40002 Willfield Drive, La Crescent. I'm not on your map, I live in the southern part of the county and of the township as well. Farmer and landowner. And I suppose I might also be wearing my deputy clerk hat as well. And I know that you all got this letter that the board, that our township board wrote and approved and signed at our regular monthly meeting last week. But I thought I would read it carefully because I've sat on commissions also and I know what those packets look like. So they wrote this last week, but for tonight. And maybe I'll just quickly paraphrase, as we noted July 13th, 2023, on the township acknowledgement form, we support the project, this is the board speaking, our township board, but challenge its location as too close to the school. When residents raised this concern at the regular township meeting in July, the construction company representative, it was Mr. Adams, cited the tower's 250-foot height as providing sufficient safety for radio frequency waves. However, and although Mr. Adams noted that it was impractical, according to the FCC, to cite them closer than 1,000 foot, the Centers for Disease Control, as several people have said, they have a different feeling and their recommendation is a thousand-foot buffer from schools. So given community concerns and the availability of distance in the proposed cornfield, we, this is the township board, urge the commission to consider a site further from the school. They thank you, they sign it, Joseph Baumgartner, the supervisor, Larry Molinour, the vice supervisor, vice chair, and also Richard Johnson, who's also on our board. I think that's good for now, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against a petition? Please step forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say.
I'm Wolf Parsons, address 42801 County Road 12, the far eastern parcel on the map here, at the intersection of 12 and 16. I also am the pastor of St. John's Lutheran Church and would like to address this from two, wearing two hats, one is pastor and one is father here. First of all, to address the concerns that were raised about the meeting that took place in St. John's support, the meeting that was announced on April 16th that we've discussed tonight was announced at least three weeks in advance. So our members had adequate time to be aware of that, both voting and non-voting members. Anyone unable or choosing to not be at that meeting would be equivalent to one of you around this table not being here for this meeting tonight. They had adequate notification. But with that being said, that does not mean every member specifically voting or non-voting was in support of this. But as a voting body, support. but as a voting body, supported the easement, at least should this contract go through. Now, as a father, I would mention that I also will have three children, myself and my wife regularly in the building, many hours throughout the day. With the information shared tonight, a lot of the extra information that was shared based on research, I heard a lot of unknowns, a lot of possibilities, but none that specifically spoke against with actual proof of anything. And I would also say that as I'm about to support the information that was shared tonight, I believe it was Mr. Adams, that anybody in favor or against is going to find research, I think, that shows in favor of their opinion of the matter and can very easily, without intent, ignore other information. With that being said, hearing just what I think was presented on this bar graph tonight, which of course was provided by the one in support of the project, I would say that I was practically shocked to hear that the cell phones we all carry show, seem to have a higher RF emission. The fact that we have probably nine different wireless devices throughout my household that my children are regularly exposed to within ten feet of most of them puts them at a higher risk than being within the cell tower, even if they were right underneath of it, shows me that this is safer than some of the, what I would deem almost guesswork based off of some of the reports that were shared tonight. That does not mean that I want to say this glibly or with glib, I guess, and I don't want to say it without concern, but I do want to say that I want to take this with an open mind and open frame. And as one who spends much of my time and my entire family will be in the building is something that I am comfortable with myself, especially based off of what I've heard on both sides tonight. Thank you.
For the third and final time, anyone wishes to speak for or against a petition, please step forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say.
Um, yes. Eric Erdman. My address is two seven three five six Coney Road three. I'm not on the map, but my children do attend St. John's. And as the pastor said about the meeting, yes, we are notified of the meetings, but there is no agenda sent ahead of time. So as I know it was a voters' meeting, I feel that, I just feel that there was not further discussion in regards to what was voted on by the congregation. And I would like for the board to consider more time to look into the health concerns and all the concerned parents to make sure that we really think this through before we move forward with putting it on our school grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Nothing. There isn't.
Hi, I would like to say something.
Hi, I would like to say something, if that would be okay.
Okay.
Okay. Louie made the motion of the hearing. Oh, there's one more?
Yes.
Speak up, Tom, speak up.
Tom, speak up, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me?
Name and address, please.
My name is Tessa Wilken, and I live at three one seven seven zero Coney Road five in Dakota. I too am not on the map, but I am near Noireine. And what I would like to say is, although Noireine may be a small community, I think we have a beautiful community, and having a structure such as this in our community is such a juxtaposed thing in our, to our community values. Although it may not decrease my home value because I'm further away, it definitely decreases my perception of what a rural community is, and I am certainly opposed to this. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
That was my motion in order.
Also.
Are we done with people? Just making sure, I don't want to miss anybody. Okay. George, uh, okay, let's go with Louie made the motion, and Eugene second to close a public hearing. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The public hearing is now closed. Even though I think you covered everything before, is there anything you, the petitioner, would like to come up and, and answer back to some of the things that were said? Even though you covered everything pretty thoroughly, pretty previously.
You know, it, it's just so unfortunate that there's so much anxiety over the safety of this, of these RF emissions, because as, as I produce information, way, they're way, way below the established exposure rates set by the governing, governing authority over these waves, so. And fortunately for the board, they took that decision out of your hand if it was safe or not. But like I said, I brought in this extra information to hopefully calm the fears of the community, but evidently I wasn't successful. But I'll add one more thing that may help people, and, and the pastor touched on it. You know, I've been in the industry far too long, I think thirty years. We've, we've done a lot of cell sites on top of hospitals, apartment buildings, and schools. And when we had a meeting with Minneapolis School Board, much like this, with all the parents because they're deciding on giving a lease, even though they've given several leases to cell companies, giving another lease. Very similar meeting, the, the school board put a moratorium on doing further leases with the wireless companies, hired their own expert to find out if these are safe, because now we're talking about having a cell site on top of a roof with a student underneath the roof, you know. And so, and there was a lot of concern, so, so the school board followed up on that, to hire their own expert. And basically the finding, he says, is you got a lot more RF emissions coming from the devices within the school with your lab, with your computers, cell phones, cordless phones, smart TVs, all this than you ever have from a cell site on top of your roof. And so then they start leasing space again. Schools aren't our favorite place to lease. You know, I've, I've done five leases myself on school property. A lot of times we have same type of meetings with the school boards, there we have no FCC or federal law to protect us. The school board doesn't have to rent a space. It's their prerogative. Sometimes the public, they bend to public pressure, but most of the case, they realize that the carriers aren't there to decrease property values or make life difficult for people. They're there to bring enhanced services, sometimes emergency services, sometimes just educational services, convenience services to the community. So this project is made to serve the community, not detract from the community. And of course, your, your assistant county attorney kind of pointed this out, as I did in my communications, is that, you know, decisions have to be made based upon and supported based upon substantial evidence. And, you know, allegations of, of concern that property values are going to decrease or, or, or other things. Mostly the concern is I don't want to have to look at that tower, it's ugly. Well, unfortunately, to bring this service to your community, to your county, we have to build structures that don't look the best. Now, a lot of cities and communities have the same problem when they want to bring better water quality to a community, they build a big, ugly water tank. It's not anything anyone wants to look at, but it serves the community, and that's the same thing with this facility. It'll service the community. It is a guy tower, so it has a lot less visual impact than a state tower a mile and a half away, which is a three hundred and thirty-foot cell support. They get pretty overbearing, but they serve the community. So this, you have to weigh, you know, are the services worth the small amount of visual impact you're going to have on the community? Other things in the community that have visual impact are roads. People don't necessarily want to look at a tar road or a dirt road, but we need them, or telephone poles, electric lines, you know. These are all things that service the community. You know, typically, once a cell site is up and operational and providing services to the community, it becomes a non-issue. People don't tend to notice them anymore. As far as the lights, they're made to warn off aircraft, and they reflect upwards. So the closer you live to the tower, the less you're going to see the light. People are going to see the light that the people live five miles away. And, and because the light's in their vision. When you live close, the light's way above your head, you're not looking, typically looking up unless you want to look for the light. But I've had to service a lot of towers and go look for the lights. And, and on a, like a three hundred-foot tower, I have to actually drive away from the tower just to look back to see if the light is on or not. I can't tell from underneath the tower if the light is there because there's reflectors to reflect the light upwards to warn off aircraft. So I guess that's, but what I've heard and what's been produced, I don't see any substantial evidence of anything to, to deny this tower and this staff recommended, you know, it follows your county ordinance, it meets your county ordinance. You could have a tighter county ordinance, but you don't. You could put one in the future. But what you have right now is what you have, and that's what you got to consider this application on what you have in the books at this point. So I guess that's what I have to say.
Louie has a question.
I just have a question about clarification. Make sure I was putting all the data you offered together properly. People have mentioned the CDC at requirement of a thousand-foot setback. But you were also talking about in the nineties, the, the old towers and how they put out five hundred watts, the transmitters. So was that when the CDC recommended the thousand-foot setback?
I have, I've never seen a CDC paper on this. I looked for it. I think the chairman looked for it. I don't see anything from the CDC on this, even if they did put out something. They're not the controlling authority over this. The FCC is, and FCC is telling the local, all local zoning jurisdictions, you can't base your decision on, on allegations of health risk. They just, you're just not, you just don't have the knowledge that they have and the expertise. And this is not new technology. Radio waves have been existence for well over a hundred years.
So the FCC suggested setback is what again?
They don't have, ten meters.
Ten meters.
Ten meters, thirty-five feet.
Eugene.
I have a question in regards to, could this cell phone tower be relocated?
Well, they're not willing to relocate it without a voluntarily at this point. They want you to make a decision based upon this location. You know, to, to one of, and this was brought up in the township board, what other locations did you consider? And there are other locations considered. This one was, it was the best one as determined by the Verizon RF engineer. And, and when, when I looked at it for zonability, you know, we got to consider several things. First, it's got to work RF-wise, otherwise the investment wouldn't be made. Then we look at, is it zonable? Is it constructible? And is the site leasable? Well, there was another site that we were interested in, but in the end it wasn't leasable. And another site that was leasable would have been more of a detraction because it'd be right behind someone's. Some of these people that came up here be right behind their house. So we figured better behind the church, at least it's not right behind someone's house. It's behind the church, it's a pretty good site, considering I, I gave the search area, you can look at that search area. I don't think there's any better site in that search area that I, that I produce that would, that would mitigate any of these fears.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Uh, thank you.
Well, thank you for all your time. I appreciate it.
I did, he was making, I, I did look for over two hours today. I tried to figure out when the CDC said a thousand-foot setback. I Googled everything and read and read and read, and I could not find anything anywhere. So I have no idea where they came up with that information from.
Hey, commissioners, before you start your discussion, I thought I would just advise the board or the commission of the following under forty-seven United States Code, Section three hundred and thirty-two, this topic of health, which seems to have come up quite a bit, it's specifically preempted by federal law, so I would caution the commission to not focus any of your discussion over this conditional use permit on any of the health impacts. Federal law specifically states that no state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, or modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. The petitioner is correct in that that is exclusively the jurisdiction of the FCC, so if this person or this petitioner is compliant with FCC guidelines and they're licensed by the FCC, that's all that can be said about the radio emissions. There's specific appellate federal court case law that overturned local zoning decisions where the denial was based off of health impacts. So I would just advise the planning commission to avoid from making any decision based on that particular topic because it's preempted by federal law, and so we can't really consider that in our decision. You can just consider the factors laid out in the ordinance.
Thank you. But we can, if there's a rare jumping mouse there, then you can take it away and can't let them build it there, but health for people, no, can't touch that. All right, what are our wishes, folks? Eugene.
I guess I can see that this communications industry has found the goose that can lay multiple golden eggs. But I was on this planning commission, I don't know, four or five years ago, and we okayed a cell phone tower on Roger Brant's land, was only three miles from my place. We had to do it expedient, expediently because they had to get this thing built. And as of yesterday, when I went to Rushford, they haven't done a damn thing. And I totally understand what all these people have been saying, but on another case that this planning commission did in Ridgeway, where the Ridgeway School is, coners wanted to build a gravel washing plant off of that quarry right along twelve because it would expedite, expedite the removal of gravel from the quarry to road construction sites. And we told them, and they did agree to move it back to protect the children in the Ridgeway School. And I think this, even though it's a different situation, is very similar. And I think that I don't know if your child is killed by a radio wave or a truck tire, how you're going to resuscitate the kid. That's my comment.
Jordan.
I would move that we table this for a month, so the church can have another meeting. It seems like not everyone there agrees on what should happen. I'd like to get a, a follow-up from them after another meeting with more attendance.
I, I agree with Jordan. If, if there was an announcement, there was a meeting with no agenda announced, nobody had any idea what they were walking into.
Yeah, I would just hate to see them, you know, shoot themselves in the foot and lose attendance or lose attendance at their school over something like this, so that's my reason for, for moving to table it.
Well, and it's a curious thing, you know, they keep talking about whether or not we've documented any health effects, and new technology often is quite dangerous initially until we do figure out what we're do figure out what we're doing because we introduce it so quickly. But there's psychological and emotional effects. People's comfort level, quality of life, wanting to live out in the country, you know, that never really seems to be taken into consideration and it's kind of huge. Um, regardless of health effects and whether or not there are any adverse health effects, how someone psychologically and emotionally feels about where they're living kind of warrants a little more careful planning of the carriers, other than whether or not signals are being dropped. If that's their whole reason for moving forward because signals are being dropped, they can't prove, they can't even say they'll fix it 100% that what they're going to do is going to make it all perfect technologically. So I, it just feels like they're not listening to the needs of the people, they're just moving forward with their economic development.
I second the table in motion.
That was a motion you made?
That was a motion.
Jordan made a motion to table it for one month to allow?
For another church.
For another church meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and Eugene seconded.
My discussion goes on, not to table it, but these people have their permit. Being my background in science, I know that at 347 feet, the power level is one over 120,409 effective power from that tower. If you're at a house at 500 feet, roughly the power of that, from the effect of that tower is one over 250,000. So the minutes power coming off that tower to anybody, the radiation is very minimal that, but that's not the issue for us voting to table. But I know this much from enough of my own scientific background that it is minimal. Now, the church reasoning wanting to put in there, that 5G system will help the church and their education system in there because it gives the school the access to 5G in their curriculum. And the quicker they get the access to 5G, maybe the kids can learn more.
Yeah, I agree with you. I just, uh.
I, I know we have different, I know we have different viewpoints of sitting here and setbacks on it, but we also know about the technology on this, shorter wavelength frequency or effectiveness. If they get too far away, the tower is virtually useless to the school and to the other people around her with 5G because they're at that, was it 33 megahertz you said, sir?
35.
3,500 megahertz.
No, not the school, I already thought it would be me.
Well, they'll use it. Schools have a way of adapting. If it's there, they will use it.
I think they spend a lot of money. I think it's time to let them go progress so it doesn't cost them more money to put it up.
All right. Now, anyone else have any comments? I guess the only comment I would make is, um, I would think that they talked about property values and I would think if you have 5G in a house, you could sell, that would raise your property value and not drop it because you can, you can work from anywhere, you can work at Mayo Clinic and work at home and, and, um, that's just me.
We already have 5G in our homes up there.
Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion on the table, Jordan, motion to table it for a month, and Eugene seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Nay. Roll call vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Lynn, Jordan, Eugene. All opposed, raise your hand. Mark, John, and Louis. So it fails.
Um, well, the, um, you know, it'd be, um, a way to make ourselves popular among some of the people in Nodine if we refuse to recommend this to the county board. But our task, as I understand it, is to judge whether or not for conditional use permit, something, uh, agrees with the land use provisions of the Winona County Code. Um, according to the staff report, there's no basis to claim that it doesn't conform with the land use objectives of Winona County. Um, the, uh, the first speaker, um, actually referenced the three bases, uh, for opposition to approval, that the FCC specifically prohibits us from, from basing it on. In other words, you can't refuse to, to allow the, uh, the tower based on, you don't like it because it aesthetically looks bad. Um, the second criteria that he was referring to was that it reduces your home value. The FCC says you cannot consider that. The third one, health effects, the FCC says, we are the ones who decide on whether it has environmental, negative environmental impacts. And, um, heretofore, they haven't, they haven't said that that's true, that, uh, that there are negative effects. So there literally is no basis, uh, uh, for us to reject it, uh, based on what I've heard tonight. Um, now, I have, I've had a 45-year career in science. Um, I looked at the, the claims that were included with the, that were, you know, part of the submissions. Um, most of the claims look very dodgy from a scientific standpoint. Um, you know, there, yes, there are things that are unknown yet, but to me, they don't rise to the level that we could tell the FCC that, that no, you're wrong and you don't have the power. They obviously do have the power. Uh, I also spent a lot, a long time looking for that thousand-foot, uh, CDC opinion, which I could not find anywhere. Uh, CDC apparently is only considered, or only, uh, concerned about people falling off towers or towers falling on people. Um, yeah, I, I think that, that, uh, you know, it's very easy to find anything on the internet, but, um, it's difficult to, to, um, really, uh, credit things that, uh, go against what seems to be established science, or at least established as far as we know. So, um, I just wanted to say that, that, uh, I think it would be pointless for us to recommend to the county board that, uh, this shouldn't go forward. Um, you know, if the county board, of course, we're only advisors, the county board makes the decisions, and if they made a decision to fight it, well, I guess that would be one way of spending taxpayer money, but, uh, to me, it seems like a, a completely lost cause.
Thank you. Discussion, anything else?
Yeah. Uh, I agree with what both John and Louis had said about this. And, uh, I just wanted to remind the people in the audience that there is time between this meeting and the county board meeting. And if they choose to have a church meeting between now and then, maybe that'll, that'll benefit them.
Motion to approve with the conditions of findings and facts.
Hey, Louis made the motion.
I second.
To approve, and John seconded. Any other discussion?
Aye.
No, you cannot.
I appreciate, I appreciate what John was saying about what our tasks are as planning commission. But I always think about democracy. I always think about serving the people and the people should be running the government, not the FCC. That, that, that's my personal feeling. And it seems like there's been enough, um, pushback tonight, concerns, um, from the citizens of Nodine, which is a very small community, it's a very rural community, and this is not keeping it rural. Um, and it is close to the church. It, it's going to be a visual for kids, you know, every time they're out there in that space. So regardless of science, it just feels like it's getting, um, pushed forward by the moneymakers, not by the people who live there. I don't know that Nodine asked for it. I don't know that Nodine residents said, gosh, we really hope Verizon comes and asks us to put in a tower. It doesn't feel like this is being, serving the people, this isn't coming from the people, this isn't all that democratic. That's, that's my concern.
You'd be right.
I have a comment to that, and, and I live in a small town called Rolling Stone. Write that down because we have zero cellphone service down there.
Oh, my gosh, that is horrible.
Zero. I don't know why we don't get a tower.
Oh, my gosh.
But I, I second that.
And it's disgusting.
I, I don't understand.
I'm moving down to Rolling Stone because I cannot get qualified phone service.
But, uh, what John was saying, we are here, we have our, we have our list of rules we have to follow. We, we're, we're following the comprehensive plan, we're following the ordinances, we're following, they dotted all the i's, they crossed all the t's. Um, that's what I'm here to see and make sure happened. I know there's some unhappy people about it. I'm hoping it all works out.
We have a legal obligation to follow them codes and that, and sitting here doing it, and we become personally liable if we do not follow them, oh, codes.
Correct. So Eugene.
I guess my comment to all of this is, we're talking, I agree very strongly with what Mark said. I agree with what Jordan said because Stockton has no cellphone service either. And yet, like I said in my beginning comment, these companies are using government money to put this on the people so that they can make the most money, not what will help the citizens of this county, even the citizens of Nodine the most. And it really bothers me that we can have this much technology and yet we actually are dumber than if we had no technology. I guess that's my comment.
Thank you, Eugene. All right. If there's no other comments, there's a motion and a second to accept with the conditions and the findings of fact. Um, let's do the hand raised. All in favor of passing the motion, please raise your hand. And you abstain? So it's three to two, the motion passes and all we are, we recommend it to the county. So it'll go in front of the county board Tuesday, September 12th at 9:00 AM. So if you want to start calling your county commissioners and pestering them or get something before, um, the September 12th, it's their decision. They have the final say. We just send this as a recommendation. Uh, thank you for your input and the thing passed and you can leave. Thank you. Okay.
Good job. Leave this power line.
Next petition. Docket PC 08172302, consider the petition of Adam Franzen to build a meat processing facility. Eric, you're up.
Petitioners, Adam Franzen, and current property owners are Scott and Judith Smith. Uh, they propose a custom meat processing to include retail and wholesale services according to the conditional use permit items in the agricultural district under 10.46 number two. Uh, don't pay attention to the green star, but the red circle is just a general overview of the area. Um, the city of St. Charles is immediately to the west, and this is in St. Charles Township, section 22. Uh, 14 State Highway is the yellow corridor that runs, it borders it to the south of the subject property and Utica off to the east. GIS rendering of the site. Um, currently, the parcel is 123 acres. However, the applicants are looking roughly at an acre and a half that would be necessary to accommodate this. Should be pointed out that the access that's proposed is also, um, going to be obtained from an easement that goes through a Me Energy parcel that has a transformer on it located immediately to the east. The yellow line is roughly showing where that easement would connect to the facility. Uh, the, the access would be then off of County Road 37, and then there's a stop or controlled intersection there at 14, but that would be the main access, uh, to the subject property. You'll see some pictures and I'll try to elaborate when, uh, when those exhibits come up. Uh, the petitioner's rendering showing that it's roughly 250 by 250. Um, that's slightly less than an acre and a half, but they, they're leaving that open because if it is approved, they have to accommodate, uh, a number of, uh, of critical features such as, um, you know, the parking, uh, stormwater management, there'd have to be some holding tanks or some septic provisions, or it'd be a bathroom that serves a, a bathroom, but then there's also, um, the byproducts and waste that would be associated with butchering and, and processing. So that would have a large consideration with that. Should note, in the staff report, there's a number of conditions and that, that just scratches the surface of everything that we could possibly think of as staff that could be in play with this. Multiple different state agencies and federal agencies would also have a part to play with this type of permit as well. Uh, rendering of the type of building, wood and steel construction, uh, this was submitted, um, by the applicant. Uh, the applicant has consulted a general and we've, staff has had communication with it, I believe it's Weezer Construction out of La Crescent. So there might be, if there's technical questions with that, um, you know, I guess we, we feel free to ask the applicant. Petitioners, uh, this, I've sampled a few of the floor plans. There was a, a general engineering set of all the components and individual rooms and, uh, there's a lot going on, I guess is kind of an understatement. Another building profile, kind of showing the access doors, loading areas, uh, basically the retail and customer access, those type of things. This is, uh, standing immediately below the My Energy location, and we're looking somewhat to the southwest. You can see Highway 14 in the distance and the most, uh, closest neighboring there located to the southwest, too. I believe that's Sander Farm. Um, picture of the corn, it is noted, and I don't believe it received hail damage, but it, it's droughty. I believe it is a very light sandier soil in that location, but it is a, a stunted corn crop. You can see, uh, this is kind of looking somewhat to the northeast and you can see the My Energy Transformer site. So essentially, if you can envision the building almost out in the corn, you could see that they would access or link it. And there is some topography changes. And there is some topography changes more dramatically as you get directly below the My Energy site. And especially the bank and shoulder of the right away of County Road 37. There's a picture that shows this. This is just a view roughly in front of the prop, proposed property, looking west back along Highway 14. At this point, you can see the city of St. Charles water tower in the distance. This is looking back to the east along 14. And there is a, uh, I believe County Road 37 is gravel as you go to the south, but then it's paved as you go north. You can see that, that that would be the main intersection that would link this project. And this is standing right on the edge of the Me Energy Transformer site, looking down at that intersection. Can see that it's paved and then there's a controlled stop sign. You can see there is a steeper embankment. And their proposal is to create a new access. So it looks like the most substantial amount of grading would have to take place to accommodate a new driveway or new access at that point. This would be again, right about where the drive access would be just slightly south of the My Energy Transformer site. Again, looking in the direction of where the facility would be built. A petitioner submitted a St. Charles Township acknowledgement form and the township board indicated no comments in regards to this request. Staff has supported, um, the granting of this conditional use permit in the findings. Um, but should the, the planning commission decide to approve it? Staff has also recommended seven conditions for consideration. That, any questions? Yeah.
You have a slide that shows this easement over My Energy's land for the driveway?
No, that has not been completed yet. That's proposed by the applicants at this time.
Cause I have an awful hard time visualizing what you're talking about.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll go back to the GIS parcel. Well, that's petitioner's drawing. This is GIS map.
If I was to pull up the Me Energy parcel, they would have to obtain rights to create a driveway and to use that legally.
Now, the green line is My Energy?
Yes, well, it's this parcel here. You see they, the parcel includes a transformer, but it's all the way.
It goes all the way to 14.
So it basically borders 14 and 37. But they don't propose coming off of 14. They propose acquiring an easement to use this as an access to a new driveway in order to link it to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Um, just to make sure that's approximately the distance because I was concerned like a semi pulling off 14 and it's about 125 feet. So it'd be a couple, couple semi lengths there before they would turn in. Just making sure they don't move that road too close to the intersection.
Yeah, no, that, that's my interpretation. That's subject to change. I was just, uh, trying to eyeball a comparison to their site plan, but no, that's obviously subject to, to, to meet some MINDOT and driveway. Even important note is if they do that, they would still need to secure a Winona County Highway Access Permit. And they have specifications on what that drive would have to look like too for clearances and distances.
Any questions for Eric?
Well.
I see that they wanted to butcher was a 15 head of Cavalier or a week and 20, or 20 beef and 15 pigs. Have they made arrangements to, uh, dispose of the remain?
Do you want to ask the applicants that?
20 beef on a small operation.
Yeah, they, um, the, the petitioner, coal petitioner, Adam Franzen is, I believe, a current employee manager of Pete's Meats. So I mean, that would be the person to, to, to forward that question to.
Well, just wait, yeah. Any other questions for Eric while he's up? None, thank you. Your turn.
I don't have much, but I can answer Louis' question.
First name and address.
Uh, Adam Franzen, 22065 Enterprise Valley Drive, Lewiston, Minnesota. Uh, to answer your question, yes, we have, uh, Santa Max comes in every, every Tuesday and Thursday, takes the remains from, from Pete's Meats currently. Just a little background.
How much are you butchering? How many head of cattle are you butchering a week?
At Pete's Meats? Um, we average about this time of year, it's a little less in the, in the summer, the fall term from September to December, about 10 to 13 beef a week and anywhere from 10 to 15 pigs a week.
I mean, Eric, do you, when you're proposing this, do you have enough cooler space to?
Yep, yeah, our coolers.
Freezer space to handle all this?
Yes.
I mean, because this is going to be a volume.
Yeah, it's, uh, so we went down to, uh, can't remember the, uh, down in Iowa and we, we toured his facility. We took their blueprint and, and that's what he was doing down there is about 20 beef a week and 15 pigs. Um, I'm just going to stagger your schedule and, and figure out how you're gonna, you know, get that stuff in the freezer and get people there to get it out of there. Yeah, yep, it does. And, uh, just a little background on Pete's Meats. We're, we're at a crossroads there. We, I mean, to be honest, our license is not going to get renewed in June of 2024. So it's either we, we, we build or Pete's Meats is closed. Um, and there's a, a definite need for, for butcher facilities in, in Winona County. You know, there's, there's a couple other ones and our little bit of, with a little bit of talking to people, we're, we're actually considering to be a federal USDA plant going forward just because of the, the demand. You know, there's people from Wisconsin that are, that want to come to, because there's no, Wisconsin, they're so far apart. Well, they come to Lewiston from Wisconsin. So it's just, there's a lot of, a lot of things that we're, we're considering right now, but the biggest thing was to get this going and, and, uh, to see what you guys had to say, so.
Any questions for him? If not, I got one.
Yep.
You're unloading in Lewiston, well, it's not ideal. Let's put it that way to be kind. Are you going to have a nicer spot here where you can unload it off hours and things and it'll be a safe place to unload?
That's a good question. You know, that's really depending on USDA inspection. I know, you know, in, in things like that, if you're USDA inspected versus like we are now, you can unload at eight o'clock at night and I can leave it there and there's no issue. With the USC inspection, I think that they have to, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but, or, or even like state there, if there's a 12 hour window, if it's within 12 hours before, with it, if it's going to be 12 hours long, they're going to stand for 12 hours. They have to have water. My intention is to have water anyways for anything standing at night. But to, to answer your question, yes, I, our plan is to have a better facility for unloading beef and, and everything, you know, all, all together different, you know, than, than what we're currently working with.
I know, I read about the shrimp. I'm waiting to watch you butcher a shrimp.
Yeah.
I have a question. I, I noticed here it says Pete's Meat is the only licensed butcher that takes whole deer in Winona County. So that, that's another need for having another facility for processing the deer hunters.
That gets complicated too with the license and stuff like that. But, um, so, and I've kind of talked to our current inspector, the facility that we currently operate in now would be okay to use for venison processing. So we would consider take that under consideration that we would continue to do that. Federal inspection versus, I don't think you can mix the venison with that. So there's, there's opportunities there, but it's, it's, yes, it's, there's, it's a lot of things going on, you know, and, and, but yes, we are, we are, you know, a lot of them don't take whole deer because it takes a lot of money to get rid of that stuff, so.
Any other questions for him? Like I said, the main thing I wanted to see is to make sure that that road doesn't get too close to Highway 14 so that
Right.
You have a safe spot. Oh, and I'm glad you're not going off 14. That would be terrible. That's too busy of a road for Eugene.
Um, I've heard from several sources and several situations about feds, I believe it is, having some kind of monetary programs to help with the building of this kind of facilities. Are you currently working under that or?
We're working on it, yes. Yep.
But you have to get this part done before you can get that finalized or you can work on both at the same time or?
We're working on both at the same time because if you don't have the conditional use permit to build on that location, it doesn't pay to continue to, in my mind, continue to pursue funding for the building if you don't have, if you can't build on that spot.
Is there any, um, timeframe for the funding closing down or anything?
There's not yet. Um, I just, we just, I just talked to, uh, the EDA director in Winona County and, uh, there's, it's available. That's what they tell you. It's available. So it could, they could shut it off tomorrow and then we're, we're out, outlawed. But it sounded like there's quite a bit of funding available to disperse. And so we're working on it. It's, but it's, it's a lot of slow, slow pace.
If, just not to be overly nosy here, I guess is the word I'd use. Is this a large proportion of the monetary outlay or a small proportion or don't you want to comment?
I don't, I guess I don't really, are you asking me if, if?
Federal part of it.
We're asking the federal government for quite a bit of money to help us because that's what the money's there for.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, the, the federal government doesn't just give you the money, all of it. So you have to have some sort of interjection with it. It's like it's 75, 25 is what the, the funding would be is. We would use, yeah. But they could say, we could apply for $5 million and they could give you a hundred thousand. Oh.
Then I don't think you're going to be building.
Well, yeah, exactly. No, that's just it. You don't know, so.
You said that in Lewiston, they're going to not renew your, who won't renew your license in?
The Minnesota Department of Ag.
Just because of the building or the?
It's, yeah, age, you know, we're, it, that's, it was an old grocery store at one time, turned into a butcher shop and that way. It's, it's time. I got, I.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that at all.
So it's just, what do you, you know, where do you? This is their best plan. We, we did research other sites in the city of Lewiston and, uh, around the area. And Scott and Judy were awesome to work with. They were willing to, to work with us to get this thing rolling. So we're, we're happy for that.
And you've had good reports from My Energy as far as?
I just had a, yeah, my brother-in-law Zach Thompson is, is going to be my partner and, uh, his brother works there. He works with, uh, there's, he used to work with like one of the head guys. And I actually had a conversation, phone conversation yesterday with, with the guy down there and, and just confirming that there's been talks and, and stuff like that. So just, there's more to be done.
Right.
You know, long ways to, you know, we got a ways to go on that part of it, but it's, get the ball rolling. There's no outline from, tell you A, B, and C to follow it, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Public hearing.
I move, we open the public hearing.
Eugene moved to open the public hearing. Jordan seconded. All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
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 Public hearing is now open. Everyone who wishes to speak for or against this petition, please step forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say. Anyone online? Oh, okay.
Uh, Don Evanson, uh, 16233 Denza Road, Minnesota City. I happened by tonight, uh, I stepped in. I support this. Winona County needs this kind of enterprise and we're losing one if we don't move ahead. Thank you.
Anyone else for or against this petition? Please step forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say. Nothing online, anybody?
We see it.
What? Okay. For the third and final time, anyone wishes to speak for or against this petition? Please come forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say.
I move, we close the public here.
Eugene made a motion to close the public hearing and Lynn seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The public hearing is now closed. What are your wishes, folks?
I would, uh, love that we, uh, recommend approval of this petition with the findings of fact as written in the conditions.
Second.
Jordan made the motion and Lynn seconded. Discussion time. Louis.
I think this is a worthwhile project. It's in, uh, the length of, or prospect of our zoning and planning to keep our agricultural base going. But I think there's one problem there. I don't think they're thinking big enough.
I, I will agree with you. If you're going to go to, if you're going to go to getting inspectors in there, aren't you going to need more space, more people? No?
I haven't worked with an inspector yet. I don't know what it's going to be like, so there's hope to maybe build someday at home, but right now we just need to get open.
Yep, I get it.
Did you check out that outfit down at Lime Springs?
No, that's huge. That's a vacuum plant.
Yeah, he doesn't want that. He wants a family operated, correct? Family operated.
That's why I do Mark Clark's beef.
Yep. That's right. Anybody else have any comments? All right, there's a motion, a second to accept, including the findings of fact and conditions. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, you have passed this hurdle. Your next hurdle is the Winona County Board, Tuesday, September 12th at nine AM. Best wishes with all of your endeavors and hope to get her built. Any other things need to be brought forth at this meeting? If not.
Motion to adjourn.
Jordan made the motion to adjourn and Louis seconded. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stay here. We are adjourned. Thank you.